Okay. All right. Thank you so much, Captain Francis. Thanks, everyone, for calling in. Good afternoon. This is Commander Shamin Anania Williams, and I am your NNOA Coast Guard affiliate. I'm so glad that many of you were able to call in. There'll probably be a few more that call in. I'll just kind of power through. What I'd like to do-
Join the meeting.
-is follow the agenda that we have, that I sent out. Hopefully, we have a few leaders that are available to speak on behalf of the AMOT and ELF. I think Commander Andrea Smith called in.
I can learn to understand you much better if I can get familiar with the way you talk. I need your permission to help. I can learn to understand you much better if I can get familiar with the way you talk. I need your-
Okay, stand by. Let's see if we can fix that. Okay, so maybe that... All right. So, at any rate, so we'll go ahead and follow the-
Join the meeting.
We'll go ahead and follow the agenda. One thing I wanted to mention is if you are calling in and using the Zoom app, if you have questions, you can actually post your questions online. That way, we're not talking over each other. So, see if that works out. If it doesn't work out and you have questions, then please feel free to ask your questions at the end of each briefout. Okay? All right, so we'll get started. I will start with the National Naval Officers Association briefout. I want to start out by sharing the great work that Chief Semenetti put together with the Coast Guard Headquarters Affinity Group Fair, which took place in May. For some of you, or for many of you, you guys are probably not familiar with this, but this was the first time the Coast Guard ever hosted an affinity group fair. We have several affinity groups. You've heard, of course, you know about the NNOA, but there are others. There's the Federal Executive Women's Group. There are, there's the big organization, and so many others. And so, what the chief was able to do with support from CG-127 was to bring all the affinity groups under one roof-
Join the meeting.
...and have guest speakers come in throughout the day to talk about various topics and/or to share more information about their affinity group. Our NNOA president was gracious enough to attend and be the morning guest speaker, which was well received. One highlight that I'd like to share, which I was super proud about, was a segment on acknowledging bias, concessions of a diversity skeptic. We had a full house for that segment. And while I was aiming for a majority audience, we had the right mix of audience. And basically, we had an SES from the Department of Transportation come in and talk about his experiences, you know, as, you know, he started off as a Marine, you know, in the military, and then went on to government service. And in his 30 years of service, you know, for many years, he was a diversity skeptic. He was the guy that, when you talked about DNI, he, you know, shrugged his shoulders, said, "What's the point? Why is this important?" And he talked about his transition from being that guy to being a true champion of DNI. So, it was an eye-opener for those in the audience that sort of, you know, fell in his shoes, could kind of relate to him. And then, the discussion was such an impactful one. And it was impactful because he created a safe space to be able to ask and answer very hard questions. So, I'm hoping that the Coast Guard will do a repeat of a segment like that. But again, it was well received. The NNOA Training Symposium. Many of you guys have signed up for the Training Symposium. I'm so excited to say that we've got 106 folks, you know, on roster, according to CG-127's numbers, that are, that have submitted their TDYs, either to their unit or to CG-127. For auditing purposes, and if you look at the ALCOs, what CG-127 is asking is that all TDY requests that will approve through your units are sent to them. Now, we can't grow the number past 106 at this point because that list has been sent up for DHS consideration. Typically, it takes three months for DHS to approve TDY requests above 100K, but we're trying to expedite that approval. In addition to that, CG-127 was able to secure funding for 60-plus registrations. We're going to go through that list of 106, and we'll let you know as soon as possible, as soon as we hear back from DHS on whether or not they will approve all 160 TDY packages. We will let you guys know who-
Lieutenant Uger O'Mar Duke Tensin.
Join the meeting.
-who were all accepted for the 60-plus registration waivers. So, but I do want to apologize upfront for the delay. The hope was to have all of this squared away in June. But again, there is a DHS requirement that I guess, assuming no one expected. I'll be honest, this is something I was not familiar with or did not know about. But the blessing in all of this is that there's some plans forward to ensure that ALCOs like these, not just the NNOA ALCOs, but you see ALCOs for ANSO conferences and other conferences, that we have an ALCO that goes out at the start of the fiscal year. And that'll help CG-127 and the affinity reps plan a little bit better. Okay, we can have money in place-
Join the meeting.
Not just for budgeting purposes, but then just making sure that we have our approvals in place and time for TDY planning and so forth. So, we, part of the NNOA Training Symposium, many of you guys know already that the first day is usually STEM Day. August 6th will be our STEM Day program. Thanks to Lieutenant Brianna Viagas, who is on a team supporting the STEM Day event. There are 600 students that we will have opportunities to partake in outreach for. So, kudos to Lieutenant Brianna Viagas and all her efforts with STEM Day. But of course, many of you guys that have signed up for the Training Symposium will be attending the August 7th and August 8th dates. We are solidifying the agenda. The agenda is, will be impactful. We have also, like last year, we'll have a session on one-on-one mentorship. So, again, as we finalize DHS approvals, I'll be reaching out to all of the junior officers, getting information from them, as well as the senior officers, just so I can do meaningful matchups during NNOA. Feel free to reach out to me first if there's a particular senior officer that you would like to sit down with, and I'll take that into consideration. But this is going to be a great conference. I'm really excited about all the efforts that went into this. You know, for those that are still getting familiar with the NNOA, we have a team, the Board of Directors, a team of folks that have been around for many, many years, some even since the inception of the NNOA. And so, they really have a passion for making sure that our junior officers are getting everything that they need, you know, through their professional development and mentorship and networking. And so, we put a lot of love into making this conference a success. For those that are involved in the planning of this conference, thank you so much. For those that have volunteered to support the conference this year, thank you so much. I want to also mention that the mentoring project will also be briefing out at the conference and will possibly be doing some sign-ups, so be on the lookout for that. And I am super excited to share that we have a new Coast Guard affiliate and assist that will take over the duties and responsibilities of the Coast Guard affiliate starting in August, and that will be Commander Commander Moore and Lieutenant Commander Roberto Concepcion. For many of you guys, you guys know him, and he comes, they both came, how do you say? A lot of folks, you know, sent me emails and told me, "Hey, you know what? Have you considered Commander Moore? Have you considered Lieutenant Commander Concepcion?" So, a lot of folks reached out and thought that they would be good picks for the next season. And so, they're very excited about filling the role. It is a big role, but I think with- Okay, I think someone, if you can mute-
Join the meeting.
I hear another conversation going. But at any rate, these, both Commander Moore and Lieutenant Commander Concepcion are very excited about the position, but they are only as strong as the team. So, we have to continue to support our reps for the affinity groups. Not just in, you know, if you, if it's all, if all you can provide is membership financially, that's great, but it's very important that when we go in front of leadership, that we're, it's not just us speaking, that we've got 500 or 1,000 folks behind us saying the same things that we're saying to leadership. Whether it's addressing challenges that we're having within various units, whether it's challenging existing studies on, you know, underrepresented minorities and women, whatever the topic is, it's very difficult when you are the one person speaking to the commandant about that. And then, when you look at the membership numbers, it's very scarce. So, please consider, even right now, as you're listening to me or at the end of this discussion or this meeting, please consider signing up for the NNOA. Let me hurry up here because I'm going slow. So, really quick, I want to do some recognitions. Thank you to Lieutenant Tanisha Green, who has volunteered to be the new NNOA Junior Officer Panel Rep. Thank you so much for your service there. The Dr. Olivia Hooker Scholarship Award Deadline ended last month. I do have a pick, and it happens to be that it was just the only person that put in for the scholarship. So, if there's any feedback from you guys that you want to share, let me know so that we can get more folks competing for the scholarship. But this was the first go-round. This person, the selected person, will receive $500 towards school. And again, this was set aside for our enlisted personnel interested in someday joining the officer corps. I want to say congratulations to Captain Lexia Littlejohn for taking over Captain of the Port in Buffalo. She is, this was history. She is the first African-American woman to take over sector. I want to congratulate Commander Marcus Kennedy in assuming the roles and responsibilities of commanding officer air, I think it's air station Houston. You guys can correct me. And I also want to send a congrats out to Lieutenant Tiana McDonald, who just, I think, an ALCO went out. She's the winner of the NAACP Roy Wilkins Service Award. If I'm missing others, please pipe up now, and if there are any questions, please pipe up now.
Hey, Shamin, I think Commander Sean Hanna took over PAC Strike Team.
Yes, congratulations to Commander Hanna. Absolutely. Thank you.
Shamin, this is Captain Littlejohn. I just wanted to say thank you very much.
Wow, we have our star online. Thank you so much for calling in, ma'am.
Absolutely.
Okay, so if I'm not missing anything, or if there aren't any additional questions, let's move on through the agenda. Sorry for taking so long. Commander Andrea Smith, do you have anything to brief out on AMOT?
Good morning, or good afternoon, everybody. I'll just be really brief. Thanks, everybody, that continues to support the Academy Minority Outreach Team. We had a phenomenal event led by Commander Kennedy at graduation this year. And so, I thank everybody that supported that. As you probably have seen, I relieved Marcus, as he's taken over as CEO of Air Station Houston as the primary AMOT rep for the African-American wing. And Commander Carrie Wolf is supporting me in that. We'll be traveling to the Academy next week for our quarterly AMOT meeting. And if you are not involved, and would like to be involved, please let Carrie or I know. And for all of those who recently graduated, we are waiting. We are waiting to let everybody get done with their leave and get to their first unit. But we'll be reaching out to our recent graduates to include them in the program. Our first event, we have some AMOT participants who will be at the Academy next week to be a part of the Scholars Program. As you know, our SWAB, the new class of, Jesus, what is it, 2024, arrived this summer, arrived about two weeks ago. And the first opportunity to be paired with the kids that are coming through the Scholars Program will happen next week. And so, we have about five AMOT members that are coming up to do that. So, just continued support happening for the folks at the Academy. We continue to work with the senior leadership to find ways to support not only the students, but the Academy as a whole. And if you've not signed up, let me know. We'll get you in the fold and get you paired up with a student as soon as possible. Thanks.
Okay, any questions for the Admission Minority Outreach Team lead?
This is Aram DeKovin, Chief Diversity Officer, United States Coast Guard Academy. No questions, just a huge thanks to AMOT. They're playing a crucial role in the work that we're doing up here. Thank you. Look forward to seeing you next week, by the way.
Thanks, Aram.
Amen. Thanks for calling in, sir. Okay, if no other questions, can we move on to Coast Guard Recruiting Command? Is there anyone there that can represent SOAR or talk about some of the efforts there with C5? Anyone online? Okay, so we'll move on to the Eclipse Legacy Fund. I know Commander Mark Harris is not available. Is anyone in his place to talk about the Coast Guard Academy Eclipse Legacy Fund?
Shamin, this is Errol Brown, and I just wanted to mention on Mark's behalf that FELF has undertaken for the September fundraising event in the DC area.
Yes, sir.
I think he's put a notice out in September. When I get in touch with him, I'll ask him to provide you the information to send out.
Thank you, sir. I know there was a meeting last night. I wasn't able to call into it. But for those, okay-
This is Melinda Jefferson. Hi. I can, I caught like the last 20 minutes of the meeting. September 26th is the date of the dinner, and we were able to find a venue with, it would be on Capitol Hill at the House of Representatives, one of the committee reception rooms there. That's all that I know, but everything will be confirmed through Mark.
Now, I think the Commandant Allen is supposed to be the guest speaker?
Yes. We're in the process of getting on the Commandant's schedule. I'm in the process of booking entertainment as well. But as of right now, save the date for, if you're in the Washington DC area, for September 26th, Thursday, and it will be located on Capitol Hill.
Okay, so for those that want to support this, particularly those that are in the DC area, we could use, we need volunteers. We need volunteers big time. I did speak with Mark about that last week. So, if you're interested, quickly, the Eclipse Legacy Fund. They're, and I know they're in the middle of chartering, officially chartering the committee, if you will. What they do and what they've been doing is they raise funds to support diversity and inclusion initiatives at the Academy. We support efforts to recruit URM students and to retain URM students. We support training opportunities, mentoring opportunities. So, if you are, particularly if you are an alum to the Coast Guard Academy, please consider volunteering for this effort. If you are interested, send me an email and let me know, and I'll pair you up or, yeah, pair you up with Mark Harris. Okay, if there's nothing else there, let's move on to our guest speaker. I, again, I'm looking at the time, so I don't want to take up too much time as I introduce him. But many of you guys know him. This is Captain Will Watson. He will be speaking on the topic of mentorship. For those who don't know him, he is one of our champion mentors, not just in, within the NNOA, but just in the Coast Guard. He has an impressive resume. If you've, again, I know most of you guys hadn't a chance to look at his bio, but truly, if you are looking to, looking for longevity in this organization, then he is the person to speak to. So, feel free to, of course, you'll listen to him, you'll, you know, ask questions, but feel free to reach out to him offline because he truly is that officer. Anyone, and I know this even personally, anyone just wanting a mentorship opportunity with him, he is more than gracious and more than willing-
Join the meeting.
-to support that. So, without further ado, Captain Will Watson, thank you for being here, sir.
All right, thank you, Shamin. Can you guys hear me all right? Can you hear me all right, Shamin?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good, good, good. Well, first off, if I want to say thank you for allowing me to speak, I'm not going to be before you guys long. But I wanted to say before I started to talk is that, Shamin, praises on you because you have, you have got to be the best service rep to NNOA that the Coast Guard has ever had. And I know that, at least in the over the span of my career, I can't think of one better. And I used to be the service rep.
Join the meeting.
So, I just want to say that to you, all the hard work that you do is not going unnoticed. You are the best. And with that, I'll begin. Thank you all for letting me be on with you. I'm not going to go very long. I only have nine slides. But I wanted to talk really quickly about the value of mentoring. And my disclaimer before I begin talking is that this is, from my perspective, this is not an official presentation from the hallowed halls of headquarters or OPM or anything like that, or the LDC. This is just feedback from me based upon what I've seen. And I always count it a privilege to be able to sow into the lives of others, so I'm excited to be on the line with you all. One warning for everyone on the line. My father is a Southern Baptist preacher, and so is my brother, and so is my uncle on my mother's side. I've got a couple of those folks in my family, so I come from a long line of preachers. So, I could end up talking for an hour. I'm just going to warn you, but actually, I'm just joking. I'm going to try to get this done in about 10 minutes, and hopefully, you guys will get something out of it. But I want to talk to you about the value of mentorship. I have had a great career in the Coast Guard, and I've had the opportunity to do a lot of great stuff. I've attended Coast Guard Postgraduate School. I've attended industry training, Coast Guard Spurson Industry Training. Served on the Congressional Affairs Staff. Served as both an XO and a CO. Attended Senior Server School. Served as a fellow on the MIT Seminar 21 Program. Served as Secretary, as Military Assistant to the Secretary of DHS. And now, as a SecDefy. All those things, many of those things I never aspired to, just didn't realize that they were in the realm of the possible. But the reason I was able to avail myself to those opportunities was because of mentors, and in some cases, because of mentees, some of which I think are on the line, and they know who they are. So, this just speaks to the value of mentorship. I used to be, when I started out, I used to be one of those officers that didn't get it, didn't quite get it. I was a four or five officer starting out, like most. And I was probably a four or five officer for a little longer than I should have been because it took me a little bit longer to figure things out. But I had a couple of officers come along, along the way, to put me on the path. They just showed an interest in me and were willing to invest time in me and patience with me to put me on the path. And ever since that time, I focused my efforts on trying to find those folks, those high-flying folks that I want to be, like folks who are doing things that I aspire to do. And I approach them, even now, even now. I think in the last year, I've picked up three additional folks that I just wanted to be exposed to and to learn from. And I do that also on the other end. I mentor folks and sometimes folks that don't expect it, that didn't ask to be mentored. I engage folks, and so, it's very important to me. Just if we could go to the next slide, the title of this slide says, "The Value in Mentorship." And you've probably heard some of these things before. You've heard people say, "Hey, get a mentor, get several. It's important." But why, really? There are several reasons why. It prevents you from having to reinvent the wheel along the way. There are unwritten rules and mores that are made clear. Many of you officers on the line learned along the way that as a chief, you may outrank an, I mean, as an ensign, you may outrank a chief. But you don't go around throwing your butter bar around at your new unit because somebody taught you that the chiefs, as part of their responsibility, is to help junior officers learn as they mature as leaders. So, there's a healthy respect there, but that's something that you learn through engagement with people who have experience, experience that you don't have. Mentors provide you access to information and to opportunities. They help you to, and this is critical even up to, even now, for me as an 06, mentors help you to expand your professional circles and help you to increase your exposure so that when you have access to information and opportunities, that you can take advantage of them and be successful. And mentorship over time, which I'm finding at the 06 level, can turn into sponsorship, which becomes valuable. Someone's willing to put their name on you for that difficult project or difficult assignment. It's very valuable, and that stuff builds up over a course of a lifetime, over a course of a career, I should say, of performance. Next slide, please, "How to Select Mentors." So, when you're trying to find a mentor, this is just the way, this is just the way I used to do it. I still do it. I find someone who's doing what I want to do or performing at a level to which I aspire, and I approach them directly. And you'll find that most high-flying officers will be glad to take time and energy with you and share with you. But the relationship can't be a one-way relationship. I try not to always come to my mentors asking, asking, taking, taking, taking. Sometimes I give. Sometimes if I know that they're dealing with a difficult project, they need some laborers, I'll jump in there and volunteer. Or I'll just call my mentors every once in a while just to see how they're doing. So, I try to keep it from being a one-way relationship, but I'll talk about that a little later. Strive to develop a diverse set of mentors, and you've probably heard that also. And we hear it, but we don't do it because people are uncomfortable stretching outside their comfort zone sometimes. But you have to be willing to do that because it only increases your professional exposure and brings opportunities that you might not otherwise expect to come your way. And finally, it's wise to have senior mentors, but you also need to seek out those about one to two pay grades ahead of you. Those folks who've done what you're doing not that long ago. It's fresh in their minds, and they can help you kind of figure out how to get down the road a little bit better. So, a diverse set of mentors. Senior mentor is obviously critical, but you need some right along in there with you to help you figure things out as well. And so, then the question is, if you have a mentor, you have several mentors. Where I see us sometimes not do as well with these relationships, both mentors and mentees, is we really don't know how to engage one another. A lot of times, it turns into when something goes wrong, if somebody's in trouble or something like that, and there's no logic, there's no strategic logic to the relationship. And so, if we could go to the next slide, key interactions with mentors and mentees.
Lieutenant Commander Fred Pugh.
Join the meeting.
This is how I structured my relationship with my men- This is how I structured my relationship with my mentors and mentees. Um, I spoke to my mentors before the beginning of the, the, uh, evaluation period, uh, because I wanted to work on what my conversation with my supervisor should look like. And for my mentees, I do that, I talk to them before they talk to their supervisors, um, at the beginning of the period. Uh, at the mid-period, I, I look for an assessment on how things are going, and at the end of the period, I talk to them about how they're going to handle that end-of-the-period conversation after they get their OERs, uh, because if you don't know, there is a method to these discussions. Um, and I never go into, and I just want to add this as a bit of advice, I never go into a OER counseling session in receive mode only, never. I always go in with a plan. I, I want to know at the beginning of the period, what a six, seven, or a seven officer looks like to my supervisor in whatever category. Um, what, what the best officer looks like to that person? What are the goals for this period for me? And what will, uh, establish excellent performance in your mind for me this period? I want to hear those things because I want to set my path accordingly. At the mid-period, I want to know how I'm gonna do, how I'm doing, and let me tell you something about setting these meetings up. Be careful and be wise about how you do it. Don't set up your counseling sessions for your OERs with your supervisor at a time when you know they're extremely busy. Right now, we got a hurricane bearing down on the, on the Gulf. This ain't the time for you to come ask me for mid-period counseling or beginning or end-period counseling because I'm gonna be, it's gonna be rushed, it's not gonna be thoughtful. Think about that when you're setting these up because you want your supervisor to be in a place where they can give you their full time and attention. And try to avoid accepting the, hey, you're doing a good job, just keep doing what you're doing meetings. Uh, and you can do that by you being prepared, um, to help drive the discussion, uh, with probing questions, uh, and information, uh, when you go to these sessions. I engage my mentors when I'm crafting my E resume. That goes without saying why you would do that, to make sure that what you're doing is realistic and works for the path, the career path that you want or that you want to be on. Uh, and, but, and here's an important one, before engaging my boss or peer or subordinate sometimes, to resolve a particularly difficult situation, and I'm talking about the kind of situations that if you don't handle them right, you can get fired. Um, I engage my mentors several times on these types of interactions and discussions. And here's the one thing I want to say, i- if you don't, if you don't listen to anything else I say on this presentation, I want you to hear this. When you have made a mistake, do not be ashamed, uh, to seek counsel. Uh, the truth is, you probably can't fix it on your, you probably cannot fix it on your own anyway, so many times. And I'm talking to everybody on this phone, maybe except Admiral Brown. So many times I have seen officers from the O six level, I talked to my peers all the way down to, you know, E three, you, these, you make mistakes and you're so proud, you got too much pride, and/or you're too ashamed to tell somebody and get some counsel or some support before the problem is way down the road. And I know I'm talking to somebody who might be dealing with something like this right now, and you're still not going to speak up because you got too much pride. You can't do that, you can't do that. Um, you need to talk to somebody, uh, somebody that you can trust and knows more than you, and maybe a couple of somebodies, so that you can get some wise counsel and get some of these issues resolved. I've talked, and I'm gonna tell you the truth now, I talked to, um, a senior officer, in fact, in the last four weeks, two senior officers, um, about issues just like this, and unfortunately, I talked to these folks early enough, right when the problem began, and these problems were with evaluations, uh, that we were able to resolve, uh, these problems they were having within their chain, uh, before it got down the road, before the evaluation went up the line and got signed and became a problem, and we're looking at PCMRs and all that type of thing. So, so engage somebody when you're having an issue, and especially if you're being wronged or mistreated. You definitely, uh, don't want to try and manage that on your own. Next slide, please. Next slide, I just threw that in there, I just talked about this, why can't I just do this on my own? Um, you could, you could do this Coast Guard thing on your own, um, and, you know, you might do all right, you probably, hey, who knows? What I'm saying is, um, your chances of success are much greater if you have a large professional circle of folks that can help you along the way, is all that I'm saying today. Next slide. So you decide to be a mentor, um, here are some things that I've wanted to share with mentors and some issues, some things I've learned, and some stuff I've heard, I, I, for the mentor, lessons for the mentor. Don't wait for mentees to engage you. I hear officers all the time, senior officers talk, well, you know, if they want the information, they show some initiative and, and come and approach me, and I, I have more than enough time for them. Well, guess what? Sometimes junior folks, sometimes junior folks don't know what they don't know, and they need a senior officer to be intrusive. Admiral Papp used to talk about intrusive leadership. Sometimes you gotta dive into the crowd, uh, when you see a junior member struggling and get involved and become that person's mentor, uh, unsolicited. And I've had that happen, uh, in fact, I had it happen within the last three years. I had a couple of flag officers decide that they wanted to be mentors to me, but I did not solicit, and it happens that way, and I, and I'm grateful for it. But I've done that also, when I see someone struggling and it feels like they, they're not getting the direction from whomever, I take the time to get involved, and I've seen many, many others, many of you do the same. Remember, as a mentor, it's your job to coach and advise, but it's also your job to encourage, uh, because it can get tough. Um, don't be turned off by mentees that don't follow your advice to the letter. Uh, patience is important. I have one particular mentee, and he knows who he is. I could, it's been, I don't know, years, there's always something with him. I provide him advice and I, I tell him which way to go, and he's always gonna throw something in there to go his own route and, and kind of mess things up, and then he comes back. And it wasn't until recently, I think the light bulb really came on with him, and he's starting to do very, very well. Um, but you gotta be patient with folks. I mean, we're all adults, so you, nobody's your child, you can't make anybody do anything. But it is incumbent upon the mentor to be patient. Uh, and here's another valuable point, give those mentees that don't quite get it, and I used to be one of those, give them the lion's share of the time that you do have to mentor, because those are the ones that are really needed. For those ones that you know that are really, really making it, really doing well, um, be willing to sponsor, be willing to advocate for those folks, be willing to put your name on those folks for those special, uh, assignments, special projects. Um, I recently made a phone call, uh, to OPM about an officer, uh, that, uh, worked for me, and this officer was, is outstanding. And it's one of those folks where at the unit, everybody knows this is one of the most amazing folks, one of the most amazing leaders they've ever worked with. And that's the extent of it, a great OER, and, I mean, you know, what, what more obligation is there than that? But I felt like there needed to be more done, so I called OPM, and I wasn't looking for anything but just to tell them what a great person, what a great leader we had here, that I, I think this person should probably be one of our senior leaders in the future, but who am I, I'm just an O six, right? Uh, but I'm sponsoring, I'm advocating for that person because I think he is part of what the Coast Guard needs in the future, just because of what I've seen from him. So mentors, be willing to sponsor, be willing to advocate. Next slide, lessons for the mentee. Mentees, please engage in productive discussions with your mentors. Try not, try not to come to the table empty-handed. In other words, don't always bring problems looking to take, take, take. Sometimes bring potential solutions, or at least show that you've thought about how you can resolve a situation. Um, it, it helps, uh, us come to a better resolution together. Uh, but that said, sometimes you're just at a loss, and, and, you know, that's okay. Sometimes you just don't know what to do, and that's all right, too. Um, finally, I, I think I mentioned this about, I shouldn't say finally, never be ashamed to ask for help, especially when you've made mistakes, we talked about that, uh, and never suffer in silence, because if nobody knows, you definitely won't be able to get any help. And I said already, finally, don't, don't just take gifts, and, and, and the point that I haven't made yet for mentees is who do you mentor? Uh, you're being mentored, you're, you're receiving, uh, support from senior officers, but at least at the lieutenant level, there should be one or two instances or so, JGs, that you're mentoring, and up the line, definitely, you should be mentoring someone. So don't just take gifts. Next slide, please. I just want to share with you here really quickly some of the best advice, I only have this and one more slide and I'm done, some of the best advice I've received over the course of my career that kind of guides, um, how I've, uh, moved through the organization. It comes from many of a number of sources, uh, but the first thing, you, you always hear it said that it's all about performance, uh, but remember that performance can depend heavily upon your ability to manage relationships. And this is one I think is valuable for more senior officers as well, uh, for COs, EXOs, sector commanders, deputies, sector deputies, um, et cetera. Understanding that, yes, run your unit, run your department, run your shop, but all those external, uh, entities that impact the performance of your unit or your units, uh, you need to know those folks, they need to know you. I can't tell you how many times I've seen here, even in D eight, there are officers that struggle with this, uh, and it's a known thing within the parent command or within the supporting commands, uh, that the relationships between that leader and these entities is not strong, and it hurts the command and it hurts the officer. Uh, and at a more junior level, obviously, the relationships you have within your chain and within your peer network are critically important, but this one was really, I, I put this bullet here really for the COs, the sector commanders, this is valuable, because this is where I saw some sector commanders and COs fall down on the job. They don't have good relationships with the district, nobody knows them over there, I mean, other than that they're in a position. They don't have good relationships with the base command. Um, so this is, this is important. Next, remember, and this is, this is so typical, but, but I just wanted to add, remember, someone's always watching. Um, and so I say that not, not for you to be wary of, because you're doing something wrong, you don't want somebody to see you. The point is, since you know that someone's always watching, and I really mean the junior folks, set the example. Um, I had a, a warrant officer when I was the CO in Lake Charles tell me, when I was on, and I didn't know that this guy was paying that close attention to me, but on my way out, uh, change of command, just before the change of command, I think it was, day before, this warrant officer, crusty old warrant, told me that my leadership at the unit, uh, and watching me and dealing with me changed his life. Now, I thought that was hyperbole, uh, but the fact that he said it, and just the nature of who he was made me realize, hey, don't lose sight of the fact that somebody's always watching you, somebody's always watching you. And co- conversely, when I was a junior officer, I did something really, really stupid, and I didn't, it, it didn't occur to me that anybody else knew that I had done this stupid thing until about a month or two after, and my immediate supervisor brought me in and said, hey, uh, that thing you did, don't do that, don't do that again. And it also let me know on both ends of it, folks are always watching you, good or bad. This one was great advice I got from the Commandant himself when I was working for him on the Congressional Affairs Staff. Uh, we were working an issue for a particular senator, uh, in fact, I think he was a congressman at the time. He said, try to find, always try to find a way. Admiral Schultz said to me, always try to find a way to get to yes. Uh, you know, you won't always get there, but, but try. It's too easy to say no. Uh, saying no means you generally don't have to exert any effort, and it's something that you, it's just something you're trying to figure out that's maybe in the gray areas, you, we're too easy sometimes to throw stuff into the too hard box. And so he said to me, we'll always try to find a way to get to yes, if you can get there. And so I've always, um, remembered that, and it's funny because Admiral had this, I don't know what this thing was he had, it was this red Ford Taurus thing, it was, I don't know if he still got this thing, it was the worst thing, but we were going up to the hills or something and, and we were going to deal with this member, and he told me this, I never forgot. Um, finally, on this slide, get outside your comfort zone and take the high-vis, high-risk assignment, project, or bill it. Uh, a lot of folks want the notoriety, they want the opportunity to, to do something big and impactful, but they don't want to take the risk to do it. Uh, this is, this is, this is where you do this stuff. You know, I, I tell folks, um, as the secretary, Secretary of DHS's assistant, military assistant, uh, and I was military assistant to both, uh, Secretary Jay Johnson and also to General John Kelly, uh, just before he went over to the White House. And I have probably done and seen, just tagging around with those guys around the world, five percent, maybe of the world's population has seen and done the stuff, uh, that I've seen and done, working with these folks, and, and ironically enough, more so with the, uh, with General Kelly, because, you know, he's a four-star general, so there's a lot of coaching that went on there, and a lot of interaction around the world, the folks that he had been working with for years and years when he was commanding general in Afghanistan and other, and other positions, but so many things I've learned, um, from those folks, and, and I only got there because I was willing, or, or encouraged at least, and then willing, to jump outside my comfort zone and try for some of these difficult assignments. Next slide, final slide, before I take questions from you guys, um, a couple more things I think are valuable. Uh, focus intently on the workings of your unit, I think I've said this already, but manage your external relationships. Um, I did say this already, so I'll move on to the next bullet, but that's very important, see, I put it on there twice. For this one, I learned as an XO, this second bullet here, I learned it more so as an XO, is to not be afraid to hold people accountable. Um, it can be uncomfortable, uh, but it is necessary. Uh, and by the way, start with yourself, uh, because like I said, someone's always watching. But, but I've had conversations with, um, with folks on the team that weren't fun. Uh, I wasn't doing any yelling or screaming or cussing, we were just having a frank and open and honest discussion about performance and behavior. And of course, you know, I've had to hold people accountable, but I do it because the organization's values require, uh, that I do it, it requires that I hold myself to the same standard. So don't be, um, afraid or hesitant to do your job and hold folks accountable to the standard. Um, learn to delegate and empower, and this is a story along with this one, I'm almost done, but, uh, when I was working for General Kelly, this is one of the things he shared with me, I used to go over to his house in the morning about zero, four-thirty, and the Secret Service would come and pick us up from his house, and we'd ride motorcade
Join the meeting.
We'd ride the motorcade into DC, and we'd do this every day, we'd ride the motorcade into DC, work all day, and then Secret Service would take us back, uh, to his home, and then I'd go back to my home, and that was an everyday thing. But on those rides in the motorcade, in and out of DC, there were many valuable lessons that he shared with me, and this was one of them. When I got orders to come here to be the sector deputy, one of the things General Kelly told me, he said, hey, you know, when I was the commanding general in Afghanistan, he said I had over a hundred thousand or so folks, uh, working for me. He said, and there were millions of decisions that were made on a day-to-day basis. He said, but do you know, I only made about six to eight of them. And his point to me was, hey, you're going to a sector command, and you're gonna have all these sub-units with commanding officers and OICs and have department heads, don't try to do it all, don't try to make every decision, don't try to get down in the middle of everything. Lead, lead your leaders, empower them to lead. And so I've tried to do that, I've watched, um, my boss, Captain Lux, will do that, uh, and I think I'm getting pretty good at, but this is- But this is very critical, really from the superstar JO transition at '03 to '04, where you really start managing other leaders in a real way. I think this is where I really had to put these muscles to work at the '04 level, to learn, to delegate and empower. You do it all the way up, from instant up, but it really becomes an issue at the department head and division chief level. For JOs especially, focus on getting qualified. There's a reason why you're an '03 and below for so long, especially a lieutenant for like six or seven years, because this is the time when you set your path. If you, if you're in a career field, the career field you're expected to be in, and you're not checking the boxes on the qualifications that you need according to your career path, you're doing it wrong. You need to get qualified in your field. And then finally, and this is for all of us, but something I've learned more so than anything now at the '06 level, a service reputation is a critical factor. I'll share with you guys, there's something I didn't even understand before I became a '06. During the assignment process, the '06s fill out this thing called a one-page bio, and you put the jobs that you're interested in on your resume and everything, but in the process of trying to fit you into a position, that one-page bio goes out to the flags who hold the assignments that you're interested in. And they make decisions based upon your service record, sure enough, that's outlined in that one-page bio and what they end, but then also through what they know of you, and your reputation throughout the service, and your record of performance. And so, the reputation you build now, or you begin to build now, helps to increase your professional circles and your networks, but also, one day, will be part of the reputation that helps determine whether you get the job you're looking for or not, or the opportunity you're looking for or not. And so, service reputation is a critical factor. And with that, I'll go to the next slide here, and say, finally, that all of this stuff is impacted by who knows you, and who you know, and who you allow to sow into your career and into your life. And so, get a mentor, get several mentors, and engage them strategically. And I think your career will be the better for you, I know mine has. And I'm done. Thank you all. All right, Shamin, I'm done.
Right, Captain, that was wonderful. Thank you so much. I just want to make sure I keep it open a little bit. Are there any questions out there for Captain Watson? You can either use the Zoom, or you can just pipe up. Any comments?
Hi, Shamin, this is Admiral Brown.
Yes, sir.
And I just want, yes, I just wanted to commend Captain on a stellar, stellar presentation. I am so glad it was recorded, best I've ever heard, and I just commend it to everyone. He was so on point, and his thing, he asked everyone to remember, I gave a presentation on it at Headquarters a number of years ago, and I entitle it, Feedback Is Not Fatal. And his encouragement to, when you're having problems, seek out help, and to be prepared for, and to give feedback in terms of how you can perform better, and what you need to do to be a better performer, is so spot-on, so I just commend him for that. And I guess my last comment is, he was right, I was absolutely perfect throughout my career, and never made one mistake in my life, so thanks very much for asking.
Thank you, sir.
Wow, yeah, I really can't follow his words. Captain Watson, that was amazing, I really do appreciate your time, and I really appreciate the fact that you were able to offer some examples and testimony from your own experience coming up through this organization. As you guys know, the NNOA is for everyone, right? Anyone can join the NNOA, but be mindful that the mission is very DNI-centric. It's recognizing what we have done over the many years we've been accepted, I think we were accepted back in 1972, is recognizing that, you know, as a minority officer in this organization, that there are some challenges that are unique to us. And so, this is why I value being able to have these town halls, and I'm super gracious when folks like Captain Watson can spend some time and energy providing some input and some guidance on how we can, you know, excel in this organization. So, again, I really don't have the best words, but thank you so much, Captain Watson, for being available. I would like to open up the, an opportunity for Captain Littlejohn, if you have any words to share. Again, your new post is historic, and I do remember you, I have my own personal memories of you when we were at the Academy, and I am not surprised, I'll just say, I'm not surprised at all by all the achievements you've made along the way in your career, because you were quite the cadet while we were at the Academy. But do you have any words to share for our junior officers, or even for our senior officers over?
Well, thank you, Shamin, that was quite an introduction, and thank you so much. I was actually taking notes during Captain Watson's presentation, and I thought that was a fabulous presentation, and I'd actually like to get that presentation, because I think I'm going to use that. But I'm just taking it one step at a time, and my advice to junior officers would be to keep reaching, keep reaching, and keep going and doing what you're doing, and follow the advice of Captain Watson and your mentors, and you can achieve things you never thought possible. That's all I got.
Okay, thank you, Captain. All right, so we are going to move forward, please, again, if you guys have any offline questions or comments, or if you want to reach out to Captain Watson, he, again, he is that officer. He is willing to, you know, receive emails, phone calls, from anyone that just wishes to, you know, to hear from him, or to, or needs guidance. So, please feel free to reach out to him. The only other thing that we have to cover is the Town Hall Open Mic. Are there any issues, any accolades that I missed, any challenges, any concerns that you feel you need to bring to the table, this is the time to do it? I will capture whatever it is that you feel you need me to take up to leadership, or take to NNOA for further engagement, but here's an opportunity for you to bring up whatever it is that you feel needs attention, either by NNOA leadership, or by our own Coast Guard leadership.
Shamin, this is Captain Francis, there was one question, I believe, still related to the presentation, that was chatted to everybody.
Oh, great, let me, okay, great, okay, Lieutenant Tanisha Green asked Captain Harris, oh, this is a good one, okay. Captain, for those high-risk, high-visibility assignments, how do you overcome the self-doubt that may creep in, and thoughts of not being ready, qualified for the position? That's an honest question.
Oh, I can answer that question, I can answer it honestly, too, I, I'll tell you. Yeah, you just have to, you know what, you have to talk to folks that can kind of, and that's why I say mentors are so important. One of the ones that scared me the most was the assignment as military aide to the secretary, and I'm going to be honest with you guys, I know this is going to sound funny, but I'm going to tell you the truth. When I was looking through the assignments available at that time, there wasn't a lot of great assignments out there, at least I didn't think. So I only put like five jobs on my dream sheet, and this was one of them, and I didn't have it first, at first, and then I realized, well, I can't fill out his E-resume and then put the secretary job like fifth, so I got to put it first. So I put it first. I put it on my E-resume, y'all, fully not expecting to make the shortlist. And I'm so honest with you when I say this, I put it on there, fully not expecting to make the shortlist, and then I did. And then I got interviewed, and I fully expected to not make the secretary shortlist, and then I did. And I'm knowing all along that I'm supposed to be excited about continually making these shortlists, but I was increasingly nervous, as the process was weaning down, weaning down, and I was still on the list, and I'm going, oh my goodness, I'm going to get this job. And I think I was supposed to be excited about it, but I was more nervous than I was excited. And I started making phone calls to folks that had done this stuff at the highest levels before, and this is when I say, and so listen to me when I tell you, this is one of those times when one of my mentees, not a mentor, really helped calm me down and straighten things out for me. He's retiring here soon, but Commander Deion Scott, who's over in, Deion's over in Houston, Dallas, he'll be retiring soon, but I talked to Deion, because he was in the job at the time as the junior military assistant, and he helped me to work through mentally how the thing went. You know, for me, I always tell my kids and my family members, that information helps you manage fear better than anything. So I talked to Deion, and then I talked to Admiral Manson-Brown, and I talked to Admiral Steve Rochon, I talked to Captain Jason Meriwether, and I talked to Captain Al Young, folks that had done this high-flying stuff before, and they helped me settle down, and that's the only way. There wasn't anything magical I did, I just talked to people who had done the stuff before, and they helped me to settle down. And in the beginning, to help me even make the decision to put it on my E-resume, was a talk I had with Captain Jason Meriwether, and Captain Rob Smith, to just do it, to just try it, and that it was going to be alright. And I don't mind telling you, I was nervous about it, but once I got into the game, and Deion kind of helped me along once I was into the game, to figure things out, and then I was moving down the line. So, you know, that's the way you deal with it, you got to talk to somebody who can help you settle down and realize that you can do this stuff. You wouldn't even end up on the shortlist of me competitive if your record didn't say that you were up for the job, and those folks at OPM, they're pretty smart, they kind of know who can do this stuff and who can't, so that's the advice I would offer you. Call me if there's something you're looking at doing. Back to you, Shamin.
All right, family, I don't see any other questions listed, I'm going to give you guys another going once, going twice. If there are any topics that you guys, or anyone out there wants me to consider for NNOA leadership or Coast Guard leadership, you can send me an email, sepcorp. Otherwise, if there isn't anything else, thanks again to Captain Watson, thank you to our affinity leads for providing briefs this afternoon. I think I saw Marcus Aiken's call in, I don't know if he's still online, but I would, if you are online, did you want to share any more on the ELF initiative, or some of the workings happening in September? Okay. Okay, all right. Hey, thank you guys again, and have a blessed week. Bye-bye.